As they want, they will get a receipt emailed to them and they simply take that receipt on the Saturday, on distribution Saturday, and they pick up their treasure box.
You know, I'm thinking so many people who make home visits or neighborhood activists, if you will, this could be like another arrow in their quiver of community service.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the other way too, we do realize that not everyone does have a credit card or debit card.
Yes.
So the other way is when you go to our website and you see which location in your neighborhood you'd like to go to, we have something called cash order details. And right next to that for most of our partners, you will find where it says, you know, for example Tuesdays and Thursdays between 2 o'clock and 5:30. And people can go there, bring their cash, pay, they'll get a receipt, and the same thing. It tells them the time and the date in which to return to pick up their treasure box.
All right, it's fantastic. Look, I have to compliment both of you. It's not that it's rare that we get the kinds of guests who have a good program that's going to help the community, but it's rare enough that I need to say thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I want to repeat the website, thetreasurebox.org. We'll give some telephone numbers out here in a bit. This is really fantastic because I know, I live in south central Los Angeles, in Cardina, and I see the need growing every day. And people, they mustn't be embarrassed about their circumstances. We're all kind of overmatched with the current economic climate. What kind of feedback do you get from people who are participating with this? It's got to be heartwarming.
It's absolutely amazing. That's one of our favorite parts of our program is the impact that we are making in communities and the impact our partners are making. And it's just such an amazing thing to get letters saying that I was not able to feed my family a hot meal for months.
And now I can. Well, let's take a look at exactly how the Treasure Box receives packages and ships affordable, quality boxes of groceries. David, can you show us what happens on the big day of distribution?
Today, we'll be visiting our Treasure Box delivery site in Inglewood, California, First Community Development Corporation. Our truck arrives right on time, and Richard begins to unload the treasure boxes. The volunteer team begins his day with a prayer.
I need two very, people who think they're very good counters, two very good counters.
And then it's right down to business.
Boxers, you need to tell me how many are in each stack?
We asked Arnaud to tell us why her church partners with the Treasure Box.
Just the Treasure Box itself excites me, but it gives us the opportunity to actually go beyond the four walls of our church to actually reach to the community at a time of their need. During these rough economic times, people need some options as to save and stretch their dollar, so the Treasure Box has given us that opportunity.
So here we are, Paul, inside the First Community Development Corporation where we've got things just rocking and rolling. We have all of our volunteers here represented from 10 different churches throughout Los Angeles here, and we're just really excited that they all work together. All the boxes have already been brought in, they've been accounted for, so now we're breaking them down church by church. And we have three different boxes, as you can see, we talked about our protein box, our regular treasure box, and our quick and healthy box. So each of these boxes represents a family and/or individual that's already prepaid and just received their box today. So we're really excited that we can bring everyone together to better serve the community. One of the great things about the Treasure Box is seeing all of our volunteers working together to prepare to serve the families and individuals in the community. Nicole Cooper shared with us how the Treasure Box has helped her and her family.
I think it's very helpful, and it's things that my kids can cook. It's always, to me, helping at that last minute when you're waiting on that last check of the month, and it just comes right on time, literally every month, comes right on time.
Each customer is greeted with a smile and a warm hello. They then check in and get their order verified. Finally, they are assisted to their vehicle by wonderful volunteers who are more than happy to help. We asked Pastor Robert to tell us what motivated him and his church to partner with us.
Well, for me, for once, I was unsure. You have to go first, you have to be a part of this, get the hands-on training, you've got to come, meet the people, meet new people. It's like brothers and sisters coming together, wanting to feel the heart pulse of their community, of the people that, what is the need? What can't we do, not only just have a church, what can't we do to reach out to our community and the people in the surrounding area? So you've got to come, you really have to come to be a part of this.
Treasure Box provides opportunities for people of all ages to volunteer and to serve their community. Terry told us what the Treasure Box means to her.
Oh yes, every treasure box has a story, and it's just a power of stories, the power of sharing, that's most important, and there's a lot of love, there's a lot of fellowship in it.
Now that you and the viewers at home have got to see a little bit behind the scenes of how we at the Treasure Box are able to do such a wonderful program for the community by bringing organizations together, by bringing volunteers together, and being able to serve those in our neighborhoods, one person at a time, we're just really grateful that we get the opportunity to do this throughout Southern California and parts of Arizona. So again, thank you for coming to check us out behind the scenes and seeing how we make Treasure Box a success, and ultimately, how we build Treasure Box, one community at a time.
Yeah, this is very impressive, a smooth operation, David. Now, thank you for the tour and allowing us our cameras in there.
Not a problem.
Now, let's talk about phone numbers, because I know by now people are interested. Give me the phone numbers to make contact. Mm-hmm, okay.
They can call there, and if they don't have internet access, they can call there and find out the location closest to them, where they can go and pay in cash.
And David, food stamp recipients are eligible for this as well?
We are currently working on that, Paul. Right now, we are in the process of speaking with the SNAP program and the representatives to figure out how are we going to be able to do this. What we're planning on doing is actually, once we get the approval and get all the kinks worked out, we're going to pilot it at a couple of our sites locally here in Southern California. Once we get it all ironed out and get those kinks out, then we probably will offering on a more full scale. So I would say for people out there listening to just tune in, check our website periodically through over the next couple of months.
Now, you can go on Facebook, you have a fan page on Facebook as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, if you have a fan, if you have a Facebook, we encourage you to check us out on Facebook, the Treasure Box, become our fan, we're growing every day, that's a great way to share with friends and neighbors.
And typical, we want this to become viral in our community. We need people to tell their friends. It's not necessarily that you're the person who needs it, but you may know somebody. Now, it's time to take a short break. When we return, we'll find out more about the Treasure Box program of distributing affordable groceries. We'll be right back, stay tuned.
Now is our time to work as one. To create something beautiful. To start again. To ease a burden. To provide hope where there was none. There's so many ways to create the good, what will you do?
Start creating the good by visiting iparticipate.org.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode. By clearing brush 200 feet from your home, you create a barrier, lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire. I'll still be here when you get back. Get the message, be prepared.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, the Treasure Box, a company that sells affordable, quality boxes of groceries at a hugely discounted price to anyone who wants them. Our guests are Mary Ann Richards, Regional Manager for Southern California and Arizona, and David Leonard, Community Outreach Representative for Los Angeles and Long Beach. Again, thank you for coming. This is fascinating. It's one of the most exciting new programs I've heard about, and yet it's not new, is it?
No, we've been around almost two years now.
Mm-hmm, that's, well, see, we've got to get the news out, which means telling your neighbors and friends. And David, what are some hallmarks that a concerned person might see in a neighbor or a family member that says this program maybe is appropriate to help with their nutritional needs?
Absolutely, I mean, anyone if you know, I mean, and I have friends that come in, you know, who've gotten laid off in the last year or two.
Yes.
Maybe they're trying to get by on unemployment checks, which will eventually run out, those benefits. And so just really plugging it in and letting them know, I mean, ways, it may not only be neighbors, Paul, it could be if you are, your son or daughter's part of a soccer team, or the high school programs, or maybe the glee club at school, letting those moms know, or letting principals know, or soccer coaches know about it, to get the word out to them, because they, in turn, may know a family, our counselors.
And a teacher may see a child in school that's suddenly lethargic and suspect that these are nutritional needs. So that's important.
Absolutely.
That's important. It's also important that we recognize the .org characteristic here of Treasure Box. Donations are accepted, correct?
Yes, and we have a Give a Gift program that we're very proud of, and if you don't need a treasure box, but you would like to bless someone who might, you can go on our website and under the Give a Gift box, if you just click on that, it will take you to our community partners where they have clients that do need food, and for $30, you can bless a family for a week.
This is a really good idea. I can see you moving into like gift coupons that you can give to the pastor, the priest or something.
We're looking into that, absolutely.
Because, you know, some people, they feel a little hesitant to make an offer of help to someone, thinking they're going to embarrass them, or there's something humiliating, although there's not when it comes to food, at least in my mind. I know when I see someone, a street urchin who wants money, I always say, this has to be for food. I'm not buying you liquor, I'm not letting you go buy drugs, but I'll go buy you a meal. And what a cool way to do this.
Absolutely.
I would love to see that. Can you think about having coupons?
Oh, we're working on it right now.
You hit it on the head, we're already heading in that direction.
Because with a gift card, you can bless someone else, and then they can pick the month that they want to do it, or the box that they want, and so.
The location they want.
Absolutely.
That's fantastic. And of course, we do have a mobile society, and like, for example, if you have parents who live in a different community and yet you know are needy, this is a way for them to be able to not only see fellow seniors, but get some assistance.
Absolutely.
We have parents that are buying it for their college-age kids, so instead of sending the money, they buy a treasure box and pick the location closest to them, and they go pick it up.
All right, David, tell me some of the people that you've come in contact with and what this program, the Treasure Box, has meant to them.
Oh, it's, the stories go on and on and on. They're little nuggets and little gems that I love hearing that, that wake me up in the morning, you know, keep me up at night, thinking, how can we serve more people, how can we do it better? For one instance, I saw a gentleman one time at one of our local partner churches in the city of Downey, and he had three boxes, and I was like, wow, that's a lot of food. And so I asked him, I said, sir, how you doing? I introduced myself. I didn't reveal who I was, I just said, hey, how you doing? And I said, you got a lot of food there? And he's like, yeah, yeah, you know, he says, I'm actually a landlord, and I have tenants who right now can't even make their rent, but I noticed that their kids are not even really eating, and the mom's been telling them they're having a hard time keeping food in the fridge. So he bought a box for everyone of his tenants, he had three units, and he says, if they like this program, I'm going to buy them a box every month. Oh, behold, I went back the next month to help out, and there was the gentleman, just paying it forward.
Paying it forward, that's it, that is the key. We all need to count our blessings and then share them.
Absolutely.
That's true. How about you, Mary Ann? You get to, now, you're covering a larger territory, but do you get to see this face to face?
I do, I do. There was a gentleman that calls me almost every month and orders over the phone. He's an older gentleman, so he doesn't have internet access, but he wants to bless people in his church, and he says, oh, I found another one. And his heart just is, you know, troubled by the fact that they do not have food for their families. And so it's just so gratifying to be involved in this, where for $30, you know, people spend that on Starbucks in a week.
Oh, do they ever, do they ever.
And they can feed an entire family. So it's really a beautiful thing to be involved with.
And it's okay to make a minor sacrifice too, you know, you could kind of remind yourself, I don't need to stop at the gourmet coffee shop today.
Absolutely, absolutely. You can make a difference and an impact in the lives of a family, and really, you know, that may be the only food they got for the month.
And they will never forget that, ever.
Well, and nor should they, but again, it's pay it forward. If someone's helped you, I know with my foundation, that's exactly the deal. If I help you, you help the next person in line.
Absolutely.
And that's what builds our country and makes it great.
Absolutely. Now, let me ask a question about, can people volunteer to come help? I mean, this has got to be labor-intensive to pack up these boxes and get them to where they need to go.
Yeah, actually, where the most volunteerism is needed is actually at the locations. So one Saturday a month, you can see, the Saturdays on our website, you can actually, you can contact the Treasure Box, and we'll be more than happy to get you into the right direction in your neighborhood, but you can call the church directly. We talked to many representatives from our partner organizations that say, you know, we need hands and feet to come help. So contact them and say, hey, I'm a neighbor, and I would love to come down and help one Saturday, and help unload the truck, or help pass boxes out, or help an elderly or senior citizen that can't carry their boxes, it's a bit heavy to their car, and bless them that way. So there's a number of ways.
Oh, I'm thinking of some of our traditional community groups, you know, Kiwanis, Optimus Moose, all the rest.
All the Boy Scouts.
That can come out there. Now, unfortunately, we are, we're out of time for today's program of Aging in L.A. Thanks so much to our guests from the Treasure Box, Mary Ann Richards and David Leonard. And now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. For seniors, the benefits of healthy nutritious eating include increased mental acuteness, resistance to illness and disease, higher energy levels, a more robust immune system, faster recuperation times, and better management of chronic health problems. Approximately one in every three seniors in Los Angeles has difficulty affording nutritious food, and one in six seniors receives food from nutrition programs and food banks in the city. According to a recent UCLA study, nearly half a million seniors living alone in California cannot make ends meet and lack sufficient income to pay for a minimum level of healthcare, food, housing, transportation, and other basics. Free of charge lunches are available on weekdays at the Department of Aging's multipurpose senior centers. You can call 1-800-510-2020, that's 1-800-510-2020, to find your nearest senior center. In California, the food stamp program is now called SNAP. SNAP cards can be used to purchase food from participating supermarkets, grocery stores, farmers' markets, and special programs. Seniors aged 60 or older may qualify for SNAP. To apply for SNAP, call Los Angeles County Public Social Services at 1-877-597-4777. That's 1-877-597-4777. To maintain a healthy diet, try to reduce the amount of salt, sugar, and fats in your daily eating. Increase the amount of fiber, fruit, and vegetables, and drink water regularly to stay hydrated. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks for watching, we'll see you the next time. Mary Ann, thank you so much.
Ms. Han is excused to leave today at 11:30. Mr. Parks, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Garcetti are excused from today's meeting. We're going live. Welcome to City Hall, the Los Angeles City Council chambers, and this is a meeting of the City of Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, July 6, 2011. Council meets three times per week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and all meetings are open to the public. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, the meetings are televised on Channel 35, or can be viewed by visiting our website. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the meeting to order?
Alarcon Cardenas, Englander, Han, Weezer, Corretts, Kirkorn, Labange, Parks, Perry, Race, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you very much. What's our first item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves. Mr. Corretts, seconds.
Madam President, that would bring us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Labange, seconds.
Madam President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, let's go through the agenda. Members, we're going to go through the agenda right now.
Items 1 through 15 are items noticed for a public hearing. Items 1 through 8 are ordinances. Would you like to hold them on the desk until 12 members arrive?
Yes, we will hold those items on the desk till we have 12 members present for the ordinances. Next item?
For items 9 through 13, council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on July 27.
Okay, that'll be without objection. Next order of business?
Items 14 and 15 are Department of Building and Safety liens. The department recommends that council proceed with item 14 and continue item 15 to July 13.
All right, you want to roll, open the roll on 14, and then go ahead and continue 15 without objection?
Please.
Open the roll on 14, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Item 15 will be continued without objection.
Very good. Madam President, items 16 through 25 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 16 is a general manager appointment. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Yes, I would. And Mr. Zine wants to... 18, Mr. Zine?
Yes.
Yes, all right, Mr. Zine's called 18 special.
Madam President, items 17 through 19 are ordinances. Would you like to hold them on the desk as well?
Yes, we will. Hold those on the desk.
Very good. That leaves items 20 through 25.
All right, members, any specials numbers, 20 through 25?
24.
24 for Mr. Cardenas. All right, open the roll on the remaining items, then. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next order of business?
Items 26 through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Mr. Rosendahl called 27 special. Any other specials members? All right, then open them.
Madam President, pardon me, we do have cards on 26, 27, and 28.
All right, excellent.
So that leaves 29 for...
All right. All right, then we'll open the roll on the remaining item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next order of business?
Madam President, on the, or there is a request to continue item 30 from the continuation agenda to July 8.
That'll be without objection.
That takes council back to items called special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
All right, why don't I take Mr. Labange?
Yeah, could I just have a quick moment to introduce two great young people?
Sure.
Frank Seo, and also Casey Round, who's here visiting from Korea, stand up and be recognized by the Los Angeles City Council. Frank is a great graduate of Fairfax High School, and his graduation present to himself was to buy a triangle pass throughout the country and rode Amtrak to see the great United States. Now he's a great student at UCLA.
Do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Now, we have four cards. The first two are in Van Nuys for Gary Parker and William Sizemore.
Good morning. My name is Gary Parker. I'm an L.A. resident and an IBW Local 11 member, and we support the building of Farmers Field. It's a great project, bring a lot of work to our community. Thank you much.
Morning, council. I'm William Sizemore, an IBW member, and would like to have support for the Farmers Field. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We'll come back downtown to City Hall. Arnold Sachs, is Arnold Sachs here? Arnold Sachs and John Walsh. Whoever gets here first can speak, Arnold Sachs or John Walsh. Okay, Mr. Walsh, you're next.
She's so, she's on top of it. Thank you very much. Just to catch up on a few things, I know I'd probably beat this to death, but there was another story about the gold card fiasco. In the latest story, they named a couple of councilmen, and what was interesting is Councilman Corretts had his staff member, and I don't really care about that fact, that somebody from Councilman Corretts' office used a gold card, but the interesting thing is, is that he replaced...
Stop the clock for a second. Mr. Sachs, I'm going to have to ask you to, or address your comments to the body and not to one particular individual council member, okay?
I'm not addressing a particular...
Please start the clock again.
...council member, Madam Chair. I'm addressing the councilman's use of a gold card by a staff member. Please, councilwoman. The interesting thing is that he replaced Councilwoman Gruel in that district, who sat in that district for six years before she became controller, and she claims she had no idea of the gold card program's existence. Yet in less than two years, Councilman Corretts' office was using the same program. That's what's so interesting. Another interesting feat of amazement occurred last week when you heard Councilman Parks discuss his School of Economic Finance regarding police budget concerns that were heard in the council chambers. Now we know where the nutty professor ended up. And finally, back to Farmers Field. There's a story in today's Daily Breeze regarding the Crystal Cathedral, how competing bodies want to buy the property. So how much is the property worth, this property, the convention center that wants to be torn down? And why isn't the city in and of itself looking to sell that property to an interested party? And again, the bonds owed on the convention center. What is the status of that payment? And again, how, after six months of negotiations, are you allowed to bring, come forward with a parking garage?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh, it's your turn. Thank you. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, 100,000 successful server requests per month. We have a new blog up, new posting this morning. We'd like to speak about, Ms. Han, sometimes she misses the meetings because she's campaigning. Thank you, Ms. Han. I would like you to know that HollywoodHighlands.org right now officially endorses you, and we can do something you can't do. And that's say to every disaffected Democrat, do not vote Tea Party. To every anti-Tee Party Republican, do not vote for Baby Huey. For all independents, do not vote for Baby Huey. And for Green Party, do not vote for Baby Huey. If we don't put Han in there, the whole United States is going to go down. This is like a sieve. No Baby Huey. Cry Baby Huey. And it's always nice when I talk off the subject, and it's flattering to you how you allow me to talk off the subject forever. And I just want you to know that we were, we are, it's now on our website. We've had some differences, but I'm telling you, voting for, I've had, you know, differences with everybody, so you're not different, Ms. Han. Baby Huey is not going to buy this election, and we are not going to have the official position anti-abortion, anti-choice in the most liberal district in America, Janice Han's congressional district. Thank you. And I'd just like to say HollywoodHighlands.org, check up, and we will continue. Republicans, vote for Han. Swallow your pride. We do not want a racist in there, Baby Huey. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, that marks the end of our public comment, period. Mr. Clerk, what is our first item? Yeah.
Madam President, that would bring us to item 24, called special for Councilmember Cardenas.
All right, Mr. Cardenas, item 24. Mr. Cardenas, we do have two public speaking cards. Would you like me to take those first?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. We already had a public hearing on that.
How many cards? Two cards?
There's two.
Please, yeah, I would like to open it up for those.
Mike O'Gara and Monica Vaca.
Good morning. First of all, Mr. Cardenas, thank you very much for the opportunity of speaking today. Very interesting process this is. On June 24, 2010, this project was rejected by 5 to 1 vote. On October 5, 2010, this case is appealed by a community member, one community member, Ms. Patricia Castaneda, and even though the Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council Planning Committee presents 523 signed petitions against this appeal, the appeal is granted on a 523 to 1. But even though the Sun Valley community has pleaded for this project to be held back until we can cure the ongoing homeless problem in our Sun Valley Park, the community has been ignored. I want to let you know that since this case has been appealed, Payless Market, one block away, has filed by right an application to approve a recycling center, bottle and can recycling, just like the Ratner Center, and these are very dirty centers. Our applicant says that he grew up in Sun Valley, he went to the park, he was, he's not there today. He's not bringing his grandchildren to the park today. Why? Because we have this problem. There is an ad here that says Sun Valley residents fear recycling center will attract unwanted element. If anyone, any of you ever been to the park, you'll see what that means. We want our park back, and we fear that this recycling center will just be a gathering place, or maybe they're money-making around homeless, these recycling centers. I do not know that, but these homeless will probably pick up everything in sight and bring it into the center. All I know is that the community is speaking. I have 523 petitions. We have been ignored. If this is a democratic system, it's not working. We're going to deal with this as we go, and hopefully it won't be a problem. We would like to petition that this place be closed on Sundays, at least for the first year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike O'Gara. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for letting us speak on this item. My name is Mike O'Gara. I live at 9301 Cuyahoga Avenue for about the last 40 some-odd years. The community is very concerned that because of the recent by right application from a payless market, as well as this application, we're going to wind up with two bottle and can recycling facilities within one and a half blocks of Sun Valley Park, which is a very small park with a large number of homeless. There's 18 to 21 of them in there every day, all day. Two recycling facilities will provide income for the homeless and encourage them to not go into the facilities provided by the city for them. In the unlikely event you approve this application, the community wants to add one condition to the list that is being imposed on the applicant, and that condition is that under hours of operation, they be closed on Sunday. There's, there's no people near there, and it's going to become a bad hangout. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
You're welcome. That completes our, Cardenas, that completes our public comment. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank the community members that I've personally met with on more than one occasion, and that my staff has met with on many, many occasions. I'd like to thank them for their diligence and their efforts in making us aware of a lot of the issues that are going on in the community. But what the matter that before us is about a recycling center, and we all know that recycling is very, very important. It's something that is now mandated in the state of California, and it's something that unfortunately, the state of California has given by right opportunities to markets to be able to open up a recycling center, for example, on their parking lot, without it going through a public process like the one that we're going through right now. And the fact of the matter is, it appears that there is a supermarket about a block away from this proposed site, and they seem to be commencing the process of opening up their recycling center with or without the community say so. On this one, we do have community say so, and I have taken into account a lot of the requests and questions from the community. And there's at least one amendment that I'd like to make today, and that is that the recycling center of, the hours of operation not include Sunday. So that's an amendment to the, just want to remind the clerk that I'm amending it verbally on the floor here, that the, thank you very much, seconded by Mr. Labange, Councilmember Labange. As Mr. O'Gara has just pointed out, there are things that Mr. O'Gara disagrees with on this application, and I appreciate that, and I am listening to the community, and just as you requested, Mr. O'Gara, and you've shared with my staff, and we just communicated with the potential operator slash owner, should this be approved today, that we are going to be amending it. He didn't exactly agree that that was the understanding that we had before today, but we let him know that we respectfully disagree with him, and then out of respect for the community, no operations on Sunday. In addition to that, I think it's really important for people to understand that most of the issues that have been brought about, about this recycling center deal with the homeless that are going on about a block and a half away at Sun Valley Park. I want to remind you, council members, for those of you that have homeless issues in pockets of your districts, and I think almost, almost all of us do, the fact of the matter is the homeless issue is something that we need to make sure that the county engages more on, and we are engaging the county more on this matter than in the past, that we use every resource that we can find, state resources, federal resources, people who are looking forward to be a part of that industry and need to do hours, et cetera. We're engaging as many aspects as we can to try to address the homeless issue, which is somewhat remotely related to whether or not we have a recycling center or not, because we haven't had a recycling center here on Ratner Street, yet we have had homeless. We haven't had a recycling center here, yet we have homeless issues that we're trying to address. So the fact of the matter is, there's a saying in Spanish that translates from everything bad, something good comes of it. This attention about a recycling center, whether it's by right at the market or right here on Ratner Street, has brought us closer together as a community and caused us to dialogue with business, with residents, people who are apartment owners, people who are business owners, people who are property owners, coming together to realize that we need to address this homeless issue much more aggressively, and hopefully as... this homeless issue much more aggressively, and hopefully as compassionately as possible. And by that fact, I think a lot of progress has been made, a lot of commitments have been made by property owners adjacent to the park, and I thank them for that. And also, a lot of commitments have been made by my office and every level of government to address the homeless issue there. So the real issue today, ladies and gentlemen, is should we support recycling in the community of Sun Valley, specifically with this recycling center, with many restrictions that we put on them? One of the restrictions I'd like to announce once again that the community is aware of, that we're subjecting this recycling center to a full one-year review. What that says in a nutshell is, after one year of reviewing, we're not gonna wait for one year to review it. We'll be monitoring them, and we're listening to the community, and giving the owner feedback every month along the way. But after a year, if it turns out that this is creating a problem for the community, that the owner can't rectify or that we can't help rectify, then we will give them the notice that this recycling center will no longer exist on that site. We will reject their ability to have the permission to do so. That's the best we can do at this time. Another thing, you understand this, Mr. Reyes, there are things that people can say are takings. When people own property in this country, they're zoned a certain way, and they have the right to utilize those properties. And this is the thing that the property owner has asked that the city allow him to do. Yes, you are right, we did reject it at one time, we have continued to negotiate with him, we have put some tremendous restrictions on this particular site, not only with aesthetics, but operating hours and requirements and security issues and things of that nature. Hopefully, this will become a model. And if it works well, then we can feel better about the fact that we're allowing this to take place. Again, recycling, ladies and gentlemen, is mandated by the state of California. Us, as local government, we have pressures to try to follow those mandates and allow people to use their properties for such purposes. Unlike what the state has done, they have overridden us locally, and they're allowing a recycling center, for example, to be put up a block away without operating restrictions like we've done here. They can operate on Sunday. We can't. Do I get six minutes as an opening?
You're at three over. You're three minutes over.
I thought as an opening, we get six minutes.
Well, three over, plus three is six.
Now I'm at six. But when you interrupted me, I was ten seconds ahead. Anyway, where was I? Councilmembers, I hope that you'll support us on this. Again, the most stringent aspect I'd like to remind you of is, we will have a full-on review, and if this turns out to be something that the property owner and the operator do not comply with all of the requirements, and even if they do comply with all the requirements, and we have more problems than we anticipated, then we will exercise our right to revoke the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Reyes. Three minutes, Mr. Reyes.
You mean, I don't have six minutes?
We'll give you some extra.
I was just kidding, just kidding. First, I just wanted to stand and, then my colleagues, we had a robust discussion, there's that word again, in committee, and I did see the tension from the community folks that were against this, this whole consideration, but, and I gotta give Councilmember Cardenas' staff credit in being able to respond to the concerns. I think the one-year review is a great way to essentially keep, those are responsible, keeping their feet to the fire accountability. So those are key measures that were taken in the discussion. Pictures were shown of the park. And Councilmember Cardenas, I have the same kinds of challenges. When you have folks who are essentially trying to make a living, and we need tighter coordination with our health department, and how we look at multi-jurisdictional controls in maintaining security for the community, it's all one face. But for us, the intricacies of coordinating lots of health issues, where do you place them? Just the cards alone, it has been a challenge. But to monitor this as carefully as I've been led to understand, and I see the commitment, I would support Councilmember Cardenas's efforts and see a genuine effort between the community stakeholders, the applicant and the council office, and this could become a great thing. So I appreciate your time, and I would encourage an i-vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Cardenas, you wanna press your button again, or just take the vote? Okay. He doesn't need more time. All right, so on this matter, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Very well. Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 16.
Number 16. And do we have a card on that? Alan?
Sir, that is the general manager appointment.
Oh, well, he was just up here greeting me. Ms. Kim, you wanna take the ascender hot seat? You're welcome. You're welcome. Give him some sound. Can we give Mr. Kocorian some sound?
Colleagues, no? Oh, there we go, there we go. As Chair of the Education and Neighborhoods Committee, it's a pleasure to present Mr. Bongwon Kim, who has been appointed by the mayor permanently now as the general manager. He's been acting as interim, and we've had a very close working relationship with Mr. Kim as he's tried to manage a department under the gravest of difficult circumstances, a department that has been savaged by budget cuts and reduced dramatically in its size. Mr. Kim has attempted to manage through these difficult storms with grace, and I think as effectively as could be expected under these dramatically difficult circumstances. He's been a very positive partner of mine in trying to develop a more effective and more accountable neighborhood council system. And after having heard public input in committee, I respectfully ask for your i-vote in support of his appointment.
Thank you. Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And I rise to support this permanent appointment to the job of General Manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And as my colleague, Mr. Kocorian, said, it's been some difficult times in the department. You know, the budget has really pretty much slashed your department as we used to know it. There was a moment there in time when we were actually going to disband the entire department and move those functions into other departments. And I wanna thank Paul Kocorian for saying, "Wait a minute, wait a minute, not so fast. What exactly are these functions? Which department's actually gonna absorb these, and how does that work going forward?" And while, Paul, you mentioned efficient and accountable, certainly, we want that. And I believe we have safeguards in place for that kind of accountability. But let's not forget, this was the first department that the city created in a very, very long time. Dennis Zine and I remember in 1997, when we were on the charter commission, we created a department. Yeah, right? You don't create departments. It's the first one we've created in a really long time. And even the name of this department gets lost when we have reduced it to done. Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. This department was created really for one purpose. That was to empower neighborhoods, empower communities, allow residents of Los Angeles to have a voice in the decisions that we make down here on the city council, that the planning commission makes, really, that every commission makes. We wanted neighborhoods and communities to weigh in before the decisions were made, so that they would have a real say in, you know, development projects, policy decisions. I still think the lacking piece of this movement is the, you know, the early warning system, and the neighborhood council's ability to weigh in with their community impact statements. I still want that to work better and more powerful. But do not forget, and I'll just tell you this as I vote for you today, please always remember that that really is your foremost mission, in my opinion, is to continue to find a way to empower these neighborhood councils. Let's not let their elections, or their ability to access their dollars, or their makeup of their board members, let's not let any of that get in the way of what they truly are here for, and that's to be the voice of people from neighborhoods. We're up to, what, ninety-five, I think, neighborhood councils. And while not everybody's a member of neighborhood councils, and we still have homeowner organizations, and we have chambers of commerce, and business organizations, and park advisory boards, still, this is the vehicle that the people of Los Angeles voted for in 1999 when they approved our new city charter, that these neighborhood councils would be the official voice of their community, of their neighborhood. And so, all that you can do, despite what we've done to your budget, despite the disrespect sometimes that your department gets, please remember that you are first and foremost charged with empowering neighborhoods, and charged with getting other departments in the city to understand the value of neighborhood councils and how they can work more closely with the neighborhood councils to deliver services throughout this city in a way that is more efficient and more accountable. So thank you for your service, but just try to keep that in your mind every day that you go to work. That's what you're there for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. This appointment now is to the next mayor come, is that correct? Is that how it works? Just out of clarification? Is that right? I just wanna know.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, so you'll have to live through this situation here. And I think what Ms. Han said is right, you have to become creative. I'm not pleased with some of the things that have happened, but also, at the same time, it's a situation where there's been a convergence of other challenges. Information is knowledge is power. And if we really, 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 really wanted to do something, we'd empower the city clerk's office to be an arm of information that goes beyond just this city hall. And that's what you have to do. I think Ms. Han said it so eloquently about getting other departments to be able to do the job. But also, it is to advise, in the charter, if you remember, the city council. And it's not an independent form of government, it's an organization. And having worked here for many, many, many years, thirty-five years, this neighborhood movement is a great one. And sometimes the people who are in neighborhood associations just wanna do their neighborhood and don't wanna do the bureaucracy. You have to be able to help them clear their bureaucracy and be able to express what they want for their community, express what they want for your community, and be creative and work with other levels of government, so that we know to include people in this process of what the governance is. And then ultimately, we have to make the decision what we feel is best for all of Los Angeles. But it doesn't happen unless you lead the way. You don't need to know where every piece of paper is. You need to know where to go to get the piece of paper that tells you what's going on in their neighborhood and how they could affect the proper change. So that's your task that you and your staff have to do, and have updated information lists for people that go to. A lot of people come in, and there is a difference. I look more to the neighborhood association in the block than I do to the neighborhood council on a specific zoning issue. On a regional issue, everybody's welcome, but sometimes the neighborhood council is not focused enough on a simple block or a small block as it would be on a larger regional issue, which their voices should be heard. So these things have to be balanced, and I hope you do that and incorporate, and don't be shy, and speak up, and use the talents that you have to empower people to take their hand to that microphone and say, "This is their opportunity to voice them," to be able to create the type of energy that's necessary, so people feel, when they get engaged with their community, they can have success. Good luck, and kumsa me da.
And thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. I just wanted to publicly thank you for your work in managing this department and your work in our district to work with our neighborhood councils, and to say that we're looking forward to continue to work with you. I think you've jumped into a lot of fires, at least in our district, and you've handled them professionally, and with, keeping in mind some of the ideas that we heard here and thoughts that we heard here in terms of empowering the neighborhood councils and empowering community members, I wanna thank you for your work there, and I think you bring the right approach to this. And we are there to set the rules and regulations for the neighborhood councils, and they're there to advise departments and council members on what the community needs are and what their thoughts are. And I think it's a difficult balance, but I've seen you walk that fine line plenty of times, given the various issues that were thrown your way. So I think with you at the helm, we're gonna continue to work with this democratic process for our communities. And democracy is not pretty, it's not easy, and us throwing a lot of this decision-making or advisory decisions to, at the local level, it's not gonna be pretty. But we're doing very well, I think, in terms of moving forward, and I wanna thank Mr. Kocorian for his work on this. I think he's, you've certainly taken this issue well in your committee to continue to refine this process as well. So with both of you, I think we're gonna continue to work forward and to empower our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Council President Zine. First, congratulations. Interim for two years now?
Interim for a year.
A year?
Yes.
Okay, and when we look at that, and you've had, you know, I've had many conversations about some of our challenges, what I'd like to know is, in this position, knowing what you've learned, and seeing in this environment of austerity and being as frugal as possible, yet we have challenges. As you recall, a few years back, there was an amazing study from USC that spoke to representation and democracy, and we look at the makeup of the city, the issue of language, interpreters, cultural diversity. Who are we listening to? Looking at this tale of two cities that has been spoken about over and over again, and yet we saw the challenges that we have witnessed throughout the city. I hate to put this in this place, but I need to ask you, what will change? How do you see us addressing these challenges, understanding we have, if we're gonna be inclusive, if we're going to change the conclusion of that USC study, what do we need to do in this time of austerity to achieve those goals? Can you just share some ideas or some concepts you might have? I'm not holding it to you. I won't call you in a year and say, "What happened to this? What happened to that?" I wanna understand, how do you see that change?
Thank you, Councilman. That's actually one of the challenges going forward that I see for the neighborhood council system, and it's one of my top three priorities. The Councilman is referencing a study USC conducted about three years ago that tracked the demographics of participation of neighborhood council boards, and they found that it was roughly reversed, the population of Los Angeles. And I think comparable studies of similar kinds of initiatives across the country confirm that the demographics of participation tend to lead with people who are more educated, higher income levels, which is kind of intuitive, because those are people that have some time to spend, and it does take a lot of time to run these neighborhood council boards. However, I've been spending some concerted time in the communities where they have lower civic participation, and they tend to be in lower-income communities of color. South LA Alliance of Neighborhood Councils is getting revitalized. I've been going to their monthly meetings, that's one way to address it. I've also started some, having some conversations with people like Ken Draper at City Watch, and he recognizes that unless the neighborhood council system is more inclusive of the diversity of Los Angeles, their advice-giving influence is not going to be as strong. So I think there is recognition from neighborhood council leaders across the city that we have to address the diversity issue and representation issue, because the neighborhood council system really is for everybody. So I thank you for raising that. I think that there are some programmatic approaches that we might want to take. For example, I've organized some nonprofits. Some of you may be familiar, Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust, Community Health Council in South LA, who are interested in working with neighborhood councils to start community gardens. So rather than try to invite people to participate in board, being a board member, which may not be all that jazzy, it may be more interesting for them to get involved in actually helping people. So that's one of the many strategies that I think we'll start unrolling going forward, but I do recognize that as one of the major challenges.
And one of the elements I find so exciting is that as an advisory board, there's a diverse set of stakeholders in these entities. We have forty percent dropout rates in our high schools, our youngsters are trying to find jobs, we're looking at how we create transition so that folks who don't speak English have the ability to learn about civic responsibility. And I believe neighborhood councils could be those entities that if the will was there to be inclusive, bring in these challenges in a structural manner within the unique character of each neighborhood, we could see a different day for the city. If... If we look at those types of needs in response to the skill sets that could make a difference in our communities, and that's the spirit I'm hoping we can evolve into so that we can truly see a change for our communities and look at the notion of democracy in a manner that addresses these challenges and
Mr. Reyes.
And working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Cardenas, then Mr. LaBonge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
You said there were three challenges or priorities. What are the three?
As you know, there are a number of motions that were introduced by Councilman Krikorian that looks at reforming the neighborhood council system. I would say that is, rises to number one. I think, for a brief summary, one of them calls for a report back to the council on creating a regional system of governance and administration. There are some concerns among neighborhood councils that the city is going to do a top-down fix for neighborhood councils, and I want to alert everybody that this is not what it's about. It's really trying to work in partnership with neighborhood councils to figure out, given that our department is not going to significantly increase in staff, how do we create a support system that is peer-based? Because actually, a lot of neighborhood, there's a lot of homegrown expertise out there in the neighborhoods that they've acquired knowledge of how to do things way beyond some of this capacity of our staff, for example. So, the idea is to create these hubs of neighborhood councils who could create kind of a peer-support resource where they look at how to run effective meetings. They look at the funding program and how to do that more effectively so that, from a management perspective, if my department's limited resources are focused on supporting, say, 10 to 12 hubs
Yeah.
of neighborhood councils across the various regions of the city, that's more manageable than trying to look at 95 separate neighborhood councils whose capacity is all over the place.
Makes sense. Some of my councils have problems with you. I have eight neighborhood councils. Six are affiliated with the city, two aren't. And one of their complaints to me constantly has been with the bookkeeping accounting division and how that works out and not works out. What improvements or changes have you made to deal with the issue of accountability and all of the issues of finances?
Sure. I understand that the funding program continues to be a source of concern for many neighborhood councils, and the past year, we have made significant improvements at the same time that our department lost 50% of our staff. So, what I've done is re-engineered the workflow by which demand warrants are processed. So, I've been able to reduce the average turnaround time for demand warrants down to 12 days, and I've heard complaints that it took three to six months for some neighborhood council, for some demand warrants to be processed. The final solution really rests on a technology solution. My goal is to establish an electronic platform for both the neighborhood councils and the city so that neighborhood councils can keep their budgets and their finances online. They could submit their demand warrants online so that we're not losing paperwork. You know, I know the city is challenged in terms of the ITA area, but we've made some progress. I think for this next budget submission, and we've been requiring neighborhood councils to submit budgets every year, we will have an electronic platform
Okay.
where neighborhood councils can submit
I think that's great. My Mar Vista people had a meeting Sunday at the farmer's market just talking about their neighborhood council budget. They were all engaged in it. I'd like you to take a meeting with my neighborhood councils as a group to discuss the procedures going forward.
Absolutely.
Somewhere in the next couple of months, we'll call them all together, and you can lay it all out so everybody gets on the same wavelength.
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Cardenas, then Mr. LaBonge.
My congratulations and condolences. I was just telling my colleague here, you have one of the toughest jobs in town. I was saying, for example, a good friend of mine has a job with the county. He's the CEO of the county. But I was telling my colleague here, he has a lot of pressure, and it's a really tough job. You pull him in a lot of directions, but he has a lot of power and stuff, so it kind of balances out.
Right.
In your case, with all due respect, yours is not a very powerful job. It's not a job that, you know, the Eli Broads of the world respect and appreciate, and they'll give you a call and
Why don't you rub it in?
What's that?
Why don't you rub it in?
The reason why I'm pointing that out is, I want to thank you for doing this public service because you have one of the most thankless jobs of all. As it is, I think that we have a pretty thankless job here at sometimes, you know, we'll meet with the community and do all kinds of things or what have you, and they come to the microphone and say that we don't listen to them after 10 meetings.
Right.
And taking in their things into account, modifying our decisions. In your case, it happens a lot like that, where you're not appreciated, and with all due respect, you're very much disrespected sometimes. And I can apologize for the people who do that for you, but I feel for any human being that has to go through that kind of disrespect that you've gone through with many people around the city of Los Angeles. And again, the reason why I'm having this dialogue with you is because I think it's important for people to understand, we, the city council, have cut your budget and your staff. We've slashed it down to 50% of what it was. Have we cut the neighborhood councils that you have to deal with in half? No, we haven't. Have the neighborhood councils grown in number since you had 100% of this, let's call it 100% of your staff versus 50% of your staff?
Yes, absolutely.
So, the number of neighborhood councils have grown?
Yes.
I'll give, colleagues, I'll give you an example. I was, I was having a conversation with Mr. Kim the other day. We had an issue with one of the neighborhood councils in my area. I'm the council member for the area, so I decided I'll give Mr. Kim a call directly, find out what we can do about it or what have you. And your answer to me was, "I understand what you're asking. It's the fair thing to do, et cetera, but we only have a couple of hours to rectify it." And quite frankly, council member, I just physically cannot do it right now. Not that you don't want to. Mr. Kim didn't say he didn't want to do it. He didn't say that he wouldn't do it. He just said, "Honestly, I can't logistically get it done because I don't have the staff to do it in the next couple of hours." So, therefore, by default, by default, we had a very disappointed neighborhood council. Not because you wanted to disappoint them, not because you wanted to tell a council member, you know, "Go pound sand. I'm not going to help." That wasn't it at all. The conversation was very honest by saying, "Look, you're asking me to do something in a couple of hours. Had you had 100% of your staff, you probably could have got somebody on the phone or down the hall or what have you, got them to grab the file, make the phone calls that needed to be made. We would have had to deal with a bank, all kinds of things within a couple of hours." And maybe with some luck, even after all that effort, everything would have fallen into place, and you would have been able to call back and say, probably out of breath, "We did it." The reason why I give you that example is because far too often, people who are disappointed are upset, and they're not being honest with themselves, and they're not being honest with the people that are upset with, and realizing that sometimes their circumstances beyond our control. And the fact of the matter is, if the neighborhood council should be pissed off at you in that particular case, really, they should be pissed off at me and all of us because we are the ones that cut your budget in half. We are the ones that cut your staff in half, not you. So, again, thank you for your service. You're doing a great job. I know a lot of people complain about your job, but every time I deal with you, you're forthright and you're honest, and you tell me exactly what the truth is, and then with that, we can make the best of the situation. Thank you very much, and I look forward to you doing a great job to continue. Thank you.
And our final speaker on this matter is Mr. LaBonge.
Just wanted to add some things to what Mr. Reyes was saying that's so important, as others had said. Park advisory boards. What's your relationship with park advisory boards? Have you had any outreach specifically to that?
I haven't myself, council member, but many neighborhood council board members wear two hats on different department
How about Friends in the Library boards? And Community Police Advisory Boards? There's a lot of different boards. You've got to know all that because if you're going to be successful in the future years, collaboration is going to be the key.
Right.
What our toughest time right now is, we ask departments to come out and make presentations to communities, and they have a variety of communities. Because of our limited dollar, I'm pushing department presentations at 4:00 in the afternoon or 5:00 in the afternoon and trying to get everybody there. So, you have this collaboration of a variety of groups that are here. So, it's real important to look at that. And also, what you mentioned about ITA, with technology, there's an awful lot of ways it could be done. Is there any discussion you have about consolidating the 95 neighborhood councils in any sense? Because they're done by the neighborhood, but yet, the allotment is the same whether it's five square miles of a neighborhood council
Right.
or five square blocks.
Right.
Has there been any thought to that at all?
Well, I think that is the basic idea behind the motion of looking at regional governance and administration, is looking at how neighborhood councils
But it's not regional government and administration. It's advising the city what the neighborhood wants.
Right.
See, what I don't want a neighborhood council to do, to worry about the business of the city, but to tell us what they want in their neighborhood.
Right.
And it has to come from the quarterback, and you're the quarterback. And you've got to know what the parameters are. Because if they worry about a governance, if they worry about intricacies, it may take away the time necessary to try to achieve their dreams for their neighborhoods. But it comes down to what you can do. I will criticize my friend Greg Nelson, who said the perspective was as wide as you could be.
Right.
I will criticize Greg Nelson, who was Joe Wax's deputy, who kind of came up with this concept out of Seattle, and I worked side-by-side with Greg over the years. You have to give people some focus what they could do for the neighborhood because if you get so wide, they'll be frustrated.
Right.
And that empowerment is so important. The park advisory boards are so important because often, a park person is different than a library person, who's different than an activist, who's different than an art person, the art community. You know, could there be a greater city of Los Angeles art neighborhood council that tries to cover every neighborhood in the arts? I don't know, but some of these things are important to look at.
Councilman, if I may use a sports analogy, I think why we all love to watch sports is that the rules of the game are clear. With neighborhood councils, because of the lack of training that all board members get, you have many people, sometimes are playing, some people are playing soccer and some people are playing baseball. I figure my job is to get the rules of the game as clear as possible so that the home run for neighborhood councils, which is getting the voices of their neighborhoods, to say, "This is the voice of our concerns in the neighborhood, and we express our views this way." That's the home run that we want for neighborhood councils. My job is to figure out how to get the rules of the game and the structure
Right.
as evenly as possible and clear as is possible so they're not messing up on process, which is a lot of the difficulties that neighborhood councils face. So, if we can create a clear structure, for example, bylaws. When I came in, we had 95 completely different sets of bylaws, not even in the same order. We approve all bylaws changes. We partner with the neighborhood councils, and in a month, we are going to have much clearer, consistent, the commission mandated a standard table of contents so that when neighborhood councils come into conflict with each other, they can look at their bylaws and say, "Oh, this is how we handle board removal. This is how we handle vacancies. These are some, how we handle some of the group dynamics issues." That way, they're able to be, become much better players in the field of community advisory and being a better neighborhood-based policy advisor to all the elected officials.
That's very good. So, thank you. My office will work with you, look forward to work with you, have updated lists on that, and also try to help coordinate in some way because of the limited demand on those key city personnel to be able to get out in the community. We can coordinate meetings at a proper hour to try to get the best amount of people there.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. That is our final speaker on this matter for the vote. General Manager, Department of Empowerment wishing to give you more exciting times. Open the roll.
Thank you.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. Congratulations to you. Mr. Reyes, for introduction. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President Zain. Colleagues, it's my honor to present to you visitors, guests, who are from Mexico City. Alejandro Barales Magdaleno.
Please stand when you introduce. Mr. LaBonge, can you move so we can see our guests? Thank you.
Magdaleno is the president of Mexico City's Legislative Assembly. Deputado Maximiliano Reyes Uniga, Chair of the International Affairs Commission for Mexico City's Legislative Assembly. There with us, Deputado Israel Betanzos Cortez. Bienvenido. Deputada Alida Aladez Riz. No, you go. Licenciado Fernandez Macías Cue. Muchas gracias, señor. Gracias. They're being hosted by Professor Armando Vazquez Ramos from Chicano Studies, Professor Calci Long Beach, who is also the president of the Mexican Cultural Institute. The primary purpose of their business is to meet with Mexican nationals, particularly those from Mexico City, and also to establish relationships between legislators. These are counterparts of Mexico City, and now there are 66. So, bienvenidos aquí a Estados Unidos, Los Angeles. Ojalá que puedan pasar un poco tiempo con nosotros, intercambio, y ojalá formalizar un discurso para el beneficio de todos. Muchas gracias.
Welcome to City Hall. Welcome. Mr. Reyes, if you could translate the last comments so our other
Yes.
listeners will
All I said was that welcome to the city. We hope to increase our dialogue, have an exchange that benefits all of us and all our communities.
Very well. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome to our great city. Mr. LaBonge.
Follow Mr. Reyes. Mexico City and Los Angeles are sister cities. We have a great relationship there. And Mexico City hosted the 68 games of the Olympic Games, as well as Los Angeles in '32 and '84. So, our kinship is deep. This is one of the great cities in the world. We were able to visit on a sister-city mission some years ago, so we thank you and welcome.
Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry? Okay. All right. Thank you. So, again, welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. We hope you enjoy your visit here to the city of the angels, city of Los Angeles. Our next will be, Mr. Clerk, you want to go through those, and then we'll go to Ms. Perry on number 27?
Certainly. Mr. President, we do have 12 members. We could take the orders at this point in time that do not have cards. Those would be items 2 through 7, 17, and 19. Again, 2 through 7, 17, and 19.
On those items, any objections? See no objection? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Very well.
Mr. President, there's been a request from a member to continue item 18 to this Friday, the 8th. Continue item 18 to July 8th.
Number 18, without objection. Continue to Friday. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate. Do we not have to tab the vote? Okay. No objection, we'll do it. That's done. Continued. Anything else, Mr. Clerk?
Not at this time, sir.
All right. Ms. Perry, then it's up to number 27. Ms. Perry is greeting our visitors. Ms. Perry, number 27?
Chair.
Oh. Mr. Rosendahl called a special. Do you want to go first?
Either way, I
Mr. Rosendahl, Ms. Perry on number 27. You called a special.
I can say my, say my piece, and then
That's okay.
Go ahead again, and we can have Mr. Miller come to the table. There seems to be, Mr. Rosendahl has raised a concern about the Brown Act with respect to a briefing that we had scheduled in our ad hoc committee on the stadium last week. Just so that the public knows, we have been treating the ad hoc committee like a Brown Act body, although we are not subject to the Brown Act. Now, I think it's a nice idea to go ahead and codify this so there's no confusion between members or any member of the city family, and so we retain the confidence of the public. But what I don't think is appropriate, or I don't appreciate actually, is the inference or the intimation that something untoward is happening through this ad hoc process. This ad hoc process is here for a reason because this is a complex transaction, and we have members there who have specific areas of interest and have been selected to be on this body to give their input, to vet this proposal before it does come to the full council. Otherwise, it becomes utter chaos. We are on a good timeline. We have adhered to it very well, and I would like to have this in committee, in our ad hoc committee. I would like to ask the city attorney to prepare a report to the committee, a written I would like to ask the city attorney to prepare a report to the committee, a written report, as to why this is not a Brown Act body, but to make some recommendations, to give a nod of respect to Mr. Rosendahl and the concerns that he has raised, although for the record, we have been treating it as a Brown Act body anyway. So, Mr. Miller, if you could speak to that issue, I would appreciate it, you know, the context in which ad hocks operate, the precedent. We have a number of ad hoc precedents we can point to, including Staples 1, and LA Live, and so on and so forth. And the issue regarding briefing the committee, and then moving forward to brief the council, and why some briefing has to be an open session, and other portions of the briefing, which are to protect the interests of the city, so that the council and the committee first, then the full council can give you input. I believe that was the purpose of it. So if you could share that with us, and I'll press my button again, because I'm out of time.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate my colleagues' comments. Yes, I put this motion forward, and I'd like the city attorney to comment on this as well. The point of this is for us as a group to appreciate either an ad hoc committee of five members and Brown Act, or we don't. It wasn't until we were in that particular meeting that I was aware that the five of us could meet, and that that would, you know, depending upon one's interpretation, wonder what that meant with the Brown Act. So I put this motion in just for clarity. The ideal thing would be that all ad hoc committees, all other committees, all should be subject to the Brown Act. But I'd like to hear the city attorney's interpretation and what he said. And colleagues, it's really a decision for us to decide if we believe in an ad hoc committee and don't think that they need to be codified in such a way as a Brown Act when the five meet, so be it. But I just want to get this out there, because clearly, I had some concern. Mr. City Attorney, could you explain this issue, and the fact that we're trying to give it some clarity here in the room?
Certainly.
But you said it was a policy decision.
Certainly. If you'll indulge me for just a few minutes. The basis of my advice was as follows. Government Code Section 54952, which is within what is otherwise known as the Brown Act, states advisory committees composed solely of the members of the legislative body are less, that are less than a quorum of the legislative body, are not legislative bodies, except that standing committees of a legislative body, irrespective of their composition, which have continuing subject matter jurisdiction, are legislative bodies for purposes of this chapter. Now, this code section was interpreted in 2002 by the California Attorney General. And in its 2002 Brown Act handbook, the Attorney General explained that the Brown Act does not apply to a limited-term ad hoc committee charged with accomplishing a specific task in a short period of time. In 2005, a local appellate court gave great weight to the Attorney General opinion, and published an opinion consistent with the Attorney General interpretation in Taxpayers for Livable Communities versus City of Malibu, 126 Calat IV, 1123. So based on that law, I advise that this ad hoc committee, if it is a limited term and has a specific task, is not a Brown Act body. Now, the city clerk and the city council traditionally has treated these bodies as if they were Brown Act bodies. City council, in many ways, has given more transparency than is required within the minimum requirements of the Brown Act. In fact, the Brown Act Excel says at 54953.7, legislative bodies of local agencies may impose requirements upon themselves which allow greater access to their meetings than prescribed by the minimal standards set forth in this chapter. So the ad hoc committee for the stadium, that, in my opinion, fit squarely within the definition of the exemption in the Brown Act, and as interpreted by the Attorney General and a local appellate court. And that committee could meet privately with staff.
Okay. And obviously, we are the policymakers, and I put this motion in, and I got the support of Mr. Garcetti and Krikorian, where I said that the CLA, in consultation with the city attorney, draft an amendment to the city council rules requiring that all council committees, standing and ad hoc, be required to abide by the public notice requirements of the Brown Act. And the reason I say that, colleagues, government is so suspiciously viewed by the constituents. And I know everyone here is open and transparent, and wants the process to go clearly. My constituents feel the same way. So it's just a matter of openness and fairness. This was a new moment. I did not even know that there was this kind of interpretation. I just assumed a five-member committee would have to be subject to the Brown Act. So really, it's up to you, colleagues, if you want to codify it with what I said as the therefore, or you don't. But I thought it should come to our attention, could have a discussion on it. I'm going to vote in favor, frankly, of ad hoc committees being subject to Brown Act. If it aren't anybody else but me, that's fine. I just want to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Alarcon.
Thank you very much. In the interest of full disclosure, Mr. Rosendahl, Councilmember Rosendahl, I'd like to read the entire motion. It says motion, and then you gave it a title, which is not required. A commitment to transparency. Then the paragraphs read, "In April of this year, the city council approved the formation of the ad hoc committee on the proposed downtown stadium and event center. At the June 30th meeting of the ad hoc committee, a representative of the office of the city attorney opined that ad hoc committees of this city council are not bound by the provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act, the state law that guarantees the public's right to attend and participate in meetings of local legislative bodies. The city attorney's interpretation is startling. And while some may argue it is legal for the city council to form ad hoc committees that have the right to waive or ignore public notice and information requirements, doing so would break faith with a public that rightly expects and deserves transparency in its government." And then the final paragraph that you just read, Mr. Rosendahl, Councilmember Rosendahl, "I therefore move that the CLA, in consultation with the city attorney, draft an amendment to city council rules requiring that all council committees, standing and ad hoc, be required to abide by the public notice requirements of the Brown Act. The fact of the matter is, the ad hoc committees are advisory, as was mentioned by the city attorney in the committee the other day, that the ad hoc committees are advisory to the council. So the decisions and/or votes and/or dialogue that happens with the ad hoc committees come to the council, just like a staff report would. And then the council decides at that moment, in this public forum, as to whether or not they are going to follow an ad hoc committee's recommendations, or they're going to do something completely different, or what have you. One of the things that concerns me is that this motion is before us, when in fact, this motion doesn't give any credit or credence to the truth. The truth of the matter is, these ad hoc committees within the city of Los Angeles, we have been posting notices, we have been having public meetings, not just the stadium committee, but all of the ad hoc committees. So we've been going above and beyond the call of duty to make sure that we do have transparency. So the fact of the matter is, we do have a commitment to transparency here in the city of Los Angeles as well. One of the things that I'm sure that is not lost on the people who are not members of this body, and are elected officials, such as a mayor, or a controller, or a city attorney who's elected, they don't have the Brown Act to abide by. Because they are not a body, they're individuals. But here, we have a body of elected officials who are elected individually, but come together collectively as a body, and we have been following the Brown Act, we have been following the rules of, and required of us, and I think we've been doing a fine job. So first and foremost, I'd like to thank the staff, and everybody who's been making sure that notices have been posted on time, that we do have our city attorneys present, that they do advise us of our responsibilities and our rights, and the rights of the public, and that we've been doing a great job. Just looking at the title, Mr. Ros, Councilmember Rosendahl, a commitment to transparency would make almost any elected official concerned about voting against this. But I'm going to vote against this, because I think it's disingenuous, and the grandstanding that took place in the committee the other day was far, far over the top. And putting this in writing now just makes it seem like we are doing things underhanded, and that there's backroom deals, et cetera. These are your words, Mr. Rosendahl, in committee the other day. And I think it's disingenuous, and it's unfair to every member of this body for us to be subjected to that kind of rhetoric. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon, followed by Ms. Perry.
Speaking of rhetoric. Jerry, what, how many ad hoc committees do we have?
Currently, I think there are four.
Four, and how, so what, if the Brown Act requirements were triggered, what would that do in terms of workload to the city clerk's office, for example?
Well, up until now, all of the ad hoc committees have operated under the Brown Act. This was the first instance where there was a discussion about whether or not it was actually subject to the Brown Act. So we are functioning as if it's just like any other committee that's subject to the Brown Act.
Is the ad hoc committee on the stadium proposal functioning as a Brown Act committee?
It is.
So what is the point of this particular motion? So they're already functioning as a Brown Act committee? So what's the problem? What is the problem, Mr. Rosendahl, we're trying to solve by this motion?
City attorney said that we didn't have to be subject to the Brown Act, as the five of us meeting privately. That was news to me. I'd never heard that before, and I wanted clarity on that concept. He had said, no, we can meet the five without a Brown Act violation. I assumed an ad hoc committee of five people followed the rules of the Brown Act. He said, not necessarily. That's why the discussion is, should it? Should it be codified? Is there a city law that should be strengthened or not?
The CLA has just testified that they are acting in accordance with the Brown Act. Except what moment?
The moment that the five of us might meet on the side.
Has that ever happened?
Well, that was going to happen.
Well, to be clear, the Brown Act also allows specifically for a Brown Act subject committee to recess to closed session on real estate.
Let me ask you a question this way. Is there anything planned at this point that would indicate that there was going to be any kind of difference from the rules that guide the Brown Act?
No.
In terms of the stadium committee? You know, the reason, the reason that maybe you did not know about the city attorney opinion is because we're acting in accordance with the Brown Act. But I agree with Mr. Cardenas. The, first of all, I'm offended by the language of the motion. It gives the appearance that we're trying to hide something, when in fact, we've gone beyond the state government rules by imposing the Brown Act on this committee, and on all other ad hoc committees. So when you peel away the reality of whether or not we are adhering to the Brown Act, the only thing that's left is Mr. Rosendahl wanting to make it seem like he's being more transparent than everybody else. And I think that puts all of us in a very awkward position, and I don't think we should, we should approve this motion, because who knows who's going to do the next one like this? And, and, you know, I'm offended by it, because I was under the impression, and I am, and now it is confirmed by Mr. Miller, that this committee is acting in accordance with the Brown Act, and we don't even have to. That's more transparent than you would make it by requiring it. And so, so I think, just as a matter of principle, we ought to, we ought to say no to this, this motion. If, if, if you want to do something, then we should have made that requirement at the, at the point that this committee was created. I would have no problem with that. We're doing it anyway. But this kind of, these kinds of motion really put a black eye on, on, first of all, it's insulting to the city attorney. I happen, I mean, what, what the, what the city attorney read makes it very clear that their interpretation is correct. And, and so, to vote for this motion would be to say that the city attorney was wrong. Now, we can, we've disagreed with the city attorney. Each of us, and all of us together, have disagreed with the city attorney at times. But in this case, that it is clearly the right opinion. But for all those reasons, I think we ought to just vote no. And if Mr. Rosendahl wants to introduce a motion that is a little more sincere, and not, not, well, I don't even want to say what I think it is, but then we should consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Krikorian?
I have to say, I'm a little baffled by all this personal insult that we're talking about. This is a very simple, little motion that says that, in light of the city attorney's advice, and in light of our current practice of applying Brown Act rules to our ad hoc committee, even though we're not required to, why don't we just codify that in the city rules? Why is anybody insulted by that? It's beyond me. This is a, the one perhaps line, Mr. Rosendahl, in here, is saying the city's, city attorney's interpretation is startling. Maybe it's not startling, in light of what the city attorney just, just read to us. Maybe it's perfectly unsurprising. But that's not really the point. The point is, this council has the ability, under the Brown Act, to go beyond the minimum requirements of the Brown Act, and in fact, we have. And that's great. I think we deserve credit for that, as Mr. Cardenas pointed out. Let's put it in our rules, then. And this doesn't apply just to this one ad hoc committee, it applies to all of our ad hoc committees. It applies to future councils. Maybe future councils, and maybe future ad hoc committees, who won't be quite as committed to this process. Maybe ad hoc committees on some other topic, where it may be, seem convenient to the elected officials of the moment to not give public notice, to not provide an opportunity for public input in ad hoc committees. What possible reason is there for saying that we shouldn't have this as part of our rules? I don't get it. I really don't. So I stand in support of this motion. I think it makes, you know, absolute perfect sense. I actually credit Ms. Perry and, and the others, as we've discussed, for having done more than is necessary. I think that's terrific that we've done that. So let's just make it part of the council rules. And if it turns out that that creates some problem in the future, and a future council wants to remove it from the council rules, then that future council certainly should have, would have the ability to do that. So to vote against this, I think, just absolutely makes, you know, no sense to me. Let's stand up and say, yes, we are doing this. Yes, we should continue to do this. Yes, we should continue to try to get as much public input on something, especially on this topic, that is going to affect this city for the next half-century. Let's be sure to do as much as we can to get the greatest degree of public involvement as possible. I don't see why that's insulting to anyone. That should be, you know, we should pat ourselves on the back, if you want, for saying that we've been doing it all along. But let's make it a part of the rules, so that in the future, we'll be able to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
That's what it says. That's what it says. There's nothing in this motion, Mr. Alarcon, that says anything about the fact that anybody has been doing anything wrong to date. The only thing it says is amend the rules to be able to do what everybody is acknowledging that we're already doing.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Ms. Perry, he was right on target for a time. We're now Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weesar, Ms. Perry, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Alarcon, and Mr. Cardenas. So, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I, you know, I tend to agree with what Mr. Krikorian has said. I was sitting here not feeling offended in, in any way. And if the language is the problem, I think we need to get beyond that. Because I agree, anything we can do to help restore the public's faith in government right now, I think we should do. And I applaud this committee. I applaud the chairwoman of this, because you have been very open and very public. And clearly, there are a lot of eyes watching the deal that we would ultimately approve for the downtown stadium. And so I think just codifying the fact that it should be Brown acted is the right thing to do. We are already doing it. We're doing, and that's, you know, to be commended. I believe the city council has, is probably one of the most open and transparent bodies. We go to great lengths to make sure that the public has a right to speak, whether they're in Van Nuys, or San Pedro, or here. I mean, we make a big deal about making sure the public is told about meetings, and I think that's, that's to the credit of this body. But I always try to look at things, and we try to do that in the city charter, right? There were so many discussions during the city charter of, who was the mayor at that time? Who was the city attorney at that time? Because there was a lot of issues involving more power to the mayor, the possibility of the city attorney not being elected and being appointed. And we tried to remove ourselves from that, much as the framers of the Constitution obviously had to create a framework for the body to come in the future. And it's not about who's sitting around here right now, colleagues. It's not who is our city attorney currently, or our CLA currently. This is about the future. This is about who might sit in these chairs. This is who might be elected to city attorney. And having a different interpretation of what these ad hoc committees might be or should be. So if there is in us the belief that these ad hoc committees, now and into the future, should be Brown acted, should have open, transparent proceedings, then I don't see any reason why we should not vote for this. And, you know, I, there, I don't see the language as being, inferring anything other than, if this is what we want to do, this is what we believe in our hearts, that the ad hoc committee should be now and in the future, then we should vote for this. And I plan to vote yes on this.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And Mr. Weesar, Ms. Perry, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Alarcon, and Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Weesar.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I approached this, I also agreed with the rationale that Mr. Krikorian mentioned and what Rosendahl presented, which was, let's just codify it, since we're doing it already. But there's got to be some reason why the state... But there's got to be some reason why the state legislature exempted these types of committees from the Brown Act. And I don't know if you have the legislative history with you, Mr. City Attorney, or what is the benefit by, if any, by retaining that flexibility that we don't codify it? For example, I was sitting here thinking that maybe there's an ad hoc committee we have to act right away. Urgent issue, let's form an ad hoc committee, and we don't have time to follow the timelines in the Brown Act, et cetera, follow every little detail in the Brown Act. So I'm just thinking, I want to hear, because as of right now, I mean, it makes sense to codify it, but what is the benefit of not codifying it, if any? City Attorney or CLA, is there any? I mean, do we want that flexibility? Why would we want to retain that flexibility by not having it retained and not having to abide by the Brown Act for ad hoc committees?
Well, let me start, and then I think Mr. Alakon can jump in. The context in which this came up was a desire to brief the committee members in closed session with some confidential positions on negotiations that have to do with... The Brown Act allows that. You go into closed session frequently on real estate negotiations, on labor issues, on litigation issues. That restriction, however, is pretty narrow. It is the amount and the terms of the payment. So the context of this came up in the committee going into closed session, and the city attorney opined that there would be more flexibility in that closed session briefing because it's not subject to the Brown Act. In my view, this is a policy issue. If it's a Brown Act committee and they're confidential real estate negotiations, they are allowed by the Brown Act to go into closed session. So that's the context in which this came up, but I do not have the legislative history on why they exempted these particular committees.
Yeah. But we are... Mr. Weezer, appoint information, Mr. Alakon, for a moment.
All my time, then, if you're gonna give that...
I would ask my colleagues...
We'll give you more time.
Mr. President, I've never... You could go ahead, Mr. Alakon, but I would ask that, in the future, if the speaker could finish and then allow the other speaker to bring up the point of information.
The point is, I would join with my former colleagues in the legislature. The fact is, almost every legislator chairs an ad hoc committee. There's 120 legislators, and if you... From the state legislature perspective, if you did that, you would add a tremendous burden on the bureaucracy. So I believe... I don't know what the legislative record is, but I would guess it has to do with...
The Brown Act does not apply to the state legislature.
No way.
Period. Correct? So it wouldn't make a difference to make the distinction between that...
I stand corrected.
Mr. Weezer, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, but the danger I do see is if we say we don't have or we have not codified the Brown Act to apply to ad hocs, but we do it anyway, but then through the process, we're gonna say, "We are now. Let's just go to closed session, and we're not following the Brown Act right now." I think there's that, you know, kind of gray area right now. So I'd rather go one way or the other and say, "Look, we're not gonna follow Brown for ad hocs, and let's just not do anything." Because it seems like right now we're jumping back and forth whether we are gonna follow the Brown Act or not. And if we codify it, we're clear. They all follow Brown Act rules, and we know what they are. We're not jumping back and forth and misleading the public one way or another in different situations as it suits our committee. So, I don't know. I think at this time, it makes more sense to get clear rules. We have those with the Brown Act, and we should just codify them and apply them.
Clear rule.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Labonges?
I like everybody that's here. I like the Brown Act. I also like ad hoc, and I know if I read the paper correctly this morning, there will be another earthquake. And that's a prime example that there will be committees that this body will establish absolutely immediately to deal with issues. Now, if we follow the Brown out, Brown...
Brown Act.
Excuse me. I know. That's my fire department on my brain. If we follow the Brown Act, if we always follow the Brown Act as it relates to this committee?
We follow the Brown Act as it relates to every ad hoc committee.
Right. You know, and I'm gonna look to Ms. Perry, because I know Ms. Perry wants to do things right. If this stadium is gonna happen, it's gonna happen because it's the right thing to do. But that issue being said here, I think it's important to have a flexibility on ad hoc because it's often... And sometimes with ad hoc, it should go back into committee at some point. But when there's an urgent situation to focus on, to come to detail, yes. So my thing I wanted to say, because I know a lot of people said a lot of things, everybody has value here. We worked hard to get here in each way, and we can all do what we do. Mr. Rosendahl has value, Ms. Perry has value, everybody has value. But let's look at the big issue. There is a reason why we have this as a requirement, and I think the chief legislative analyst stated it, the city attorney directed court, chapter and verse situation, even quoted the city of Malibu, which is not too often, that Malibu contributes something that way other than the nice sand sometimes. That being said, I think it's of value to have that condition for ad hoc. What if there's an emergency on the coastline? We get an ad hoc committee together and act in such a way. All that's of value to us. So I just wanted to raise that point. Mr. Zine, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonges. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And as chairperson of the ad hoc committee, again, I want to reiterate, we have conducted the committee in conformance with the Brown Act. So again, I find this whole motion situation to be kind of a... I don't even know what you call it, but let me make a suggestion. If you want to talk about an overall policy about how to handle ad hoc committees, let's take this motion and send it to Rules and Elections. Ask the city attorney to do a complete analysis on all the questions that have been raised here today, and then you will vote on something, and let's be meticulous about it instead of, what's the word? You know, people like to throw around, "Be more transparent," or whatever. I don't know what... I don't even know what you call this, but this is disintegrated into a mess, and I'd like to make it rational and logical and let it go to Councilmember Garcetti's committee. He's a chair of Rules and Elections. I believe he was the third on this... Well, he waived it out of committee, but I really think we should send it back to his committee. I think we should send it back to his committee and let the city attorney put something on the record, and the committee members of Rules and Elections should vet this in Rules and Elections and then send it to the full body with their commentary and their recommendations instead of what we're doing now. Because this is just a big, hot mess. So I want to send it back to committee. Mr. Labonges has seconded it. Am I correct?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we have two speakers on this. We have also Mr. Keretz, Mr. Alakon, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Krikorian, and Mr. Rosendahl on the queue if we want to follow Ms. Perry's request on this without objection. Let's hear from the public speakers, choose public speakers, then we'll come back to this and decide the action. Arnold Sacks and John Walsh on item number 27.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. I think the CLA has said it correctly, the Brown Act Committee, because an ad hoc committee in and of itself consists of elected officials and public officials, right? Which does not... The Brown Act refers to elected officials. So if you have public officials, are you then allowed to go into closed session with public officials? That's not covered by the Brown Act. So where do you hold the line on people who are not part... Public officials who are not part of the ad hoc committee who come to a committee meeting? Are they not allowed to go into closed session? And if not, why not? Because you have other public members in the closed session. That's the real point in here. The Brown Act refers to elected officials. The Brown Act doesn't refer to public officials, a public business or public persona who are serving as advisors. Doesn't say anything about advisors being elected officials. It just says advisors. What would be great in your open and transparency and the fact that this ad hoc committee is consisted of Staples Center, L.A. Live, and this downtown arena, the stadium, all projects that shut out the public and the public wasn't aware of, the costs and the benefits going to the developer on the backs of the public? And what do I mean? The public safety and the costs that were deferred and all the project... Yes, jobs were created, but all those jobs are paid for because it's an economic zone. So the give and take that occurs is really non-existent as far as the public is concerned. So when you say Brown Act ad hoc committees, you're just being disingenuous to the public because you're grouping it all as one thing when, in fact, they're two exotic, different, complete animals.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, HAN for Congress Committee, HollywoodHighlands.org. First time I appeared at a city council meeting in the state of California was 1971, 40 years ago in Berkeley. That was the old Brown Act. Who is Brown? Ralph M. Brown was Speaker of the Assembly from Fresno. He was replaced by Jess Unra. At that time, 40 years ago, I don't think anybody else was around in those days, you only got to speak once, okay? What we're talking about now is the Lloyd Connally Act. Lloyd Connally was an assemblyman. Some people may even know him. He was an assemblyman just about 20 years ago in Sacramento. The right to speak on every single item was pushed through the Assembly and the Senate and signed by Lloyd Connally, who is still around and is a judge in Sacramento County. Okay? So he's still around, if you want to hear... Now, here, I am just amazed at the way Mr. Rosendahl has been treated, has been vilified by Mr. Alakon and Mr. Cardenas. They don't treat heterosexual white men like that. They don't! And tell me when they did, when they attacked him personally. I don't know if you are homophobes. And if you are, you have the right in America to put any dirt on this man.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, stay on the subject matter and don't get personal with it.
Yeah. Before, when I was with Ms. Hahn, you let me go way off-topic.
Stay on the target, Mr. Walsh.
Yeah. Okay? Homophobes, homophobes, homophobes. Hollywood Highlands. Apologize.
Mr. Walsh, you're done. Thank you. All right. Ms. Perry has the motion, seconded by Mr. Labonges. There are currently speakers on the queue. If it's the will of this body to send this to committee for a thorough venting, since it was waived from committee, if that's the will of the body, we will send that. If there's any objection, please vote your objection. There is objection. Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Keretz. So let's continue with the speakers, then. Mr. Keretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think anyone that's ever been an elected official and under it will agree that the Brown Act is a pain and an inconvenience, but there's still a reason for it. Transparency, ethics, openness, and by and large, I think it's a good concept. For an ad hoc committee, it's not going to be any more difficult or any easier to operate under it. It's an inconvenience. It takes a little more coordination, but I think it's not a bad idea, even if it's symbolic, a symbolic nod towards more openness. And I think now that it is on the table for us to vote not to go forward with this, I think, makes us look as if we're not wanting to be as transparent, not wanting to be as open. And especially since this was raised in the context of this ad hoc committee, sending it back to committee so it doesn't reappear until after the issue has probably been taken care of really sends a doubly wrong message. And it absolutely doesn't make any sense to send it back where it could disappear out of the light of day and not come back. I think we want to send a message of greater transparency. I don't know how much of a difference it will make because we already practiced it, but now that the issue's on the table, I think it makes us look very bad not to pass it and to send it back to committee to be buried. So let's not do this. Let's not give the city a black eye for no reason over what's essentially a minor issue. Let's take a somewhat symbolic step towards transparency, not vote to send it back to committee, and vote to move forward on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon, then Mr. Cardenas, then Mr. Krikorian.
I'm still a little stunned by Mr. Walsh's comment. I think Mr. Rosendahl, more than anybody, knows that this is not an LGBT issue. This is a debate, a very fervent debate about a policy, and I am no more a homophobe than Mr. Cardenas, who I've known for a long time, is not a homophobe anymore than Mr. Rosendahl is a hetero-phobe. But when he criticizes our policies, nobody's standing up calling him a hetero-phobe because he's coming up against my policy. So I just want to dispel that stupid comment. On the issue, though, nobody's opposing the Brown Act. I happen to like the Brown Act. I like it a lot. Occasionally, on certain points within the Brown Act, it's an inconvenience, but by and large, it's fine. I have no problem with it. Mr. Walsh knows that I've supported his testimony. Now, that is a difficult process sometimes, but it's part of the Brown Act, and we respect it. The issue that I take with this is that it makes it... The way the motion is written, it makes it sound like the city attorney was incorrect in his opinion. It also makes it sound like we're trying to hide something. And so if you change the motion to say, rather than make it a negative, to make it a positive, to say that the city council has historically adhered to the Brown Act with ad hoc committees to their credit, and therefore, we ought to codify that, I would have no problem with that. The issue is not the Brown Act. The issue is the way that it is presented in the intent language of this motion. And I don't appreciate that. And I do feel that it is insulting to the city attorney, even though you can interpret the word stark, you know, in a bunch of different ways, and it might not have even been the intent, but it just comes off that way. So if the language were changed, it would be no problem. And I would move that we change the language to make it positive and say that, to the city's credit, we have adhered to the Brown Act with our ad hoc committees, notwithstanding the fact that we are not required to by state law, but out of respect for transparency and the desire to have adequate input from the public. However, because the issue has been made relative to whether or not there is sufficient transparency on the stadium negotiations, that we, in fact, would declare that, from this point forward, we would make all ad hoc committees conform to the Brown Act. That would be my... Actually, that came up pretty good. I did it off the top of my head, so I don't know if anybody wrote it down, but we got a second on that, so I would make that a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Mr. Clerk, we have a couple items. We have our 12 members. We want to take those, and we'll suspend this for a moment and then come back.
Sir, we can certainly do that. Those would be Items 1 and 8, the remaining ordinances. I do believe we have one or two cards on each item. So if you wish, we could go to Item Number 1, called Special for Cards.
Okay, Number 1, Mr. Walsh, and then we'll do Number 8, and then we'll go back, because I think we have a colleague that's gonna be leaving. We want to get these in while we have our 12 here. And Number 8, Mr. Sacks. Number 1 and 8. First, Mr. Walsh, and Number 1, then Mr. Sacks, and Number 8. Go ahead.
John Walsh, this concerns a hearing protest relative to proposed maintenance and operation of the annual assessment of the Los Angeles City Lighting District. And we'd like to support the protest 100%. HollywoodHighlands.org. And I've just been called by city council, stupid. And you had a right to say it.
All right, that's Number 1.
HollywoodHighlands.org.
On Item Number 1, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll tablet to vote. 12 eyes, Number 8, Mr. Sacks, Number 8, and then we'll return to our previous discussion.
Thank you. Because they could have picked any of these ordinance regarding lighting districts. The mayor at one time had a plan to change streetlights from the conventional bulbs that are being used now to these new energy-efficient streetlights. Is that program inclusive or considered as part of the maintenance and improvement for the lighting district and the cost for the lighting district? Are people made aware of that? Based on the fact that these LED lights will be put into use and the costs will hopefully go down, will that also mean that a reassessment in these lighting districts will occur? Just out of curiosity, was interested, especially also based on the fact that DWP wants a rate out of curiosity, was interested, especially also based on the fact that DWP wants a rate increase. Thank you.
Ms. Perry, did you have a question on this matter? Number, okay. Number Eight, open the roll, colleagues. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Very well. Let's return to our previous discussion. There were colleagues on the queue. We can please bring those back up. Okay, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Kocorian, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. LeBange, and Ms. Perry. So Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Jerry, if the council were to go ahead and adopt the language as requested in this motion, would it hinder in any way our ability to move swiftly and get policy discussed in an ad hoc committee and then move it to the floor? And I remind you, colleagues, every time an ad hoc committee meets, they are advisory to the council as a whole. So the decisions of ad hoc committees are not final. They come to the council as an advice to the council, and then the council decides in this open forum what they want to do with it. So would it hinder in any way our ability to move swiftly to the floor on matters, especially in cases of emergency? You know, we do have earthquakes around here. We do have floods, things of that nature.
Well, I don't believe it would, no. I think that we've always functioned under the Brown Act. To set up an ad hoc committee is going to take an action to the full council and there's ability in the Brown Act to have special meetings, you know, within 24 hours. So no, I don't believe that as a policy matter, making the ad hoc subject to the Brown Act could be problematic.
Should, if an ad hoc committee is getting together and we're following the Brown Act, as we have been so far, and for some reason, somebody made a mistake on a posting or what have you, and we had an ad hoc committee, we could continue, especially if the element of time is very important, and it was an innocent mistake, not an inadvertent mistake, not a purposeful one. We could continue and try to rectify it going forward. But if it was codified officially and then somebody made a mistake, wouldn't that make us have to go back, re-announce, readdress it, fix it? Wouldn't that be a delay?
That, I think, is a city attorney question. If, as a matter of law, they're not subject to the Brown Act, but as a matter of policy, the council decides to follow it. If there were a mistake, the city attorney would have to answer what kind of liability there'd be.
If the city council does not follow its own rules, council rules, there could be an administrative mandamus action brought to force the city to follow its own rules.
So it would still have the same force and effect as far as requirements?
It would have a similar force and effect, but not quite the same as a state law.
So it sounds to me as though I just stumbled on something. The motion before us is redundant based on the fact that we are applying ourselves as custom and practice in following the Brown Act. Because that's what you, Mr. City Attorney, that's what you just basically pointed out, that we've created such a custom and practice and habit in the city that we've actually put upon ourselves a certain element of expectation and requirement.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood then. I thought you were assuming that there were a codification of the Brown Act language. So the city's custom and practice, there can be a challenge to it, but I believe the city could defend that one. If it were codified into a city council rule, then it would be more difficult to defend the city council's breaking of that rule.
Okay. My last question, Mr. City Attorney, to you is this. Without passing this motion, is the city of Los Angeles currently practicing in accordance with the state constitution, the city charter, and Brown Act procedures?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Kocorian, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. LeBange, Ms. Perry, and I know Ms. Han needs to leave, so if we could stick to the two minutes and move this forward. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Deference to the time. I'll be brief, just in response to a couple of the inquiries about why ad hoc committees, you know, what the downside would be. In response to Mr. LeBange's question about emergencies, the Brown Act already provides for emergencies. There's a mechanism in place. We do that all the time. The council sometimes has to meet on an emergency basis. We can do that under the Brown Act. So there's no issue there. That's not the reason for an ad hoc exception. The reason for an ad hoc exception, as it was read to us by the city attorney, is because the ad hoc committee is not a decision-making body, and it's temporary in its nature. And so the legislature was just trying to be as restrictive as possible in its mandatory application of the act. That's it. So again, by our adopting a rule to apply this to the committees that we're already practicing it to, has no negative effect. I don't see any reason to refer it to a committee. It's before us. We all know what the Brown Act does. We operate every day under the Brown Act. We know its positives and its negatives, and we know our current practice. Let's move forward with this and get on with it.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Mr. Rosendahl, then Mr. LeBange.
To Ms. Han, I have nothing to say, except I look forward to the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. LeBange, Ms. Perry, and Ms. Cardenas.
Now, Mr. City Attorney, is there an official-written city attorney opinion on this matter?
No.
Okay. Has this gone to a committee in the last thirty days?
It was waived from committee, Mr. LeBange.
It was waived from committee. I think, I second Ms. Perry's motion to send it to committee. Paul, I respect what you say, but here, it never went to committee. It was waived. It was waived. There's no official, and you're an attorney. There's no official written report. This is the most official piece of paper, because it has the word official on it in this chamber right now. Let's have it really reviewed in committee and come back, and come back in forty-five days or less.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Mr. Weezer up now. Ms. then Ms. Perry.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, would this, if passed today, would this apply, are we going to grandfather this into existing ad hoc committees moving forward, or this only applies to new ad hoc committees?
Well, if this passed today, it's just the instruction to the CLA to work with the city attorney's office and to draft.
To draft. So this is still not going to come back to us for a while anyway?
It will come back.
It will come back, but not, I mean, how long does that take? You know, we've been waiting for some ordinances from the city attorney's office for a while now, so.
Well, without commenting on how long the ordinance is taking.
Okay. Look, if we're going to vote for this today.
It could take a while.
Got it, got it. If we're going to vote for this today, I'm going to vote yes, because I'd rather codify it than not. However, there's no urgency to this. I'd rather have more information, because I'd love to see the legislative history as to why the state legislature exempted committees such as this. What is the rationale? There might be stuff in there that, you know, that, okay. But as of right now, given the information we have, I'd vote yes. But there's no urgency. Why not send it back to committee and get the benefit of that additional information for the benefit of us all?
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Ms. Perry, then Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The thing that concerns me, and Mr. Rosendahl, I consider you a good friend, you have a Rule 54 that I guess will come up next week, where you want to pull another item out of committee, out of the ad hoc committee. Now, I don't know what your overall game plan is, but we have this ad hoc committee for a reason. We're supposed to do the hard work, vet the proposal, get into the questions, vet the issues, and do it on the record, the public record. It's a first chance for the public to be able to hear and discuss and participate. As for sending what is before us today to rules and elections, I don't know about you guys, but I don't send things to committee to bury them. I send things to committee because committees are to function, to be able to analyze something before it comes to a full council. I don't see anything wrong with sending something to committee. You can also ask the committee chair if they'll do a special meeting, a one-item agenda before a council meeting, and just focus on this. So if time is a concern, I know the president will be back at the end of the week, you could do it next week. So I don't understand why there would even be a perspective that we send something to committee to bury it. That's not a practice in which I believe our colleagues engage. And I just wanted to say that. But this next motion that's coming up to pull yet another item out of committee, I don't understand that. I mean, we have an ad hoc committee. You're on it. You're a participant and a very good, strong, vigorous participant in the process. And I'm going to encourage you to continue to do that. We do post everything. We do notice everything. And we do have public participation. And I think we will continue to do that. The next meeting we're working on may be out in our San Fernando Valley office at Mr. Cardenas's request. And I think that will encourage even greater public participation. The only reason I suggested today that we take what's before us today and send it to committee is out of respect for you, Mr. Rosendahl, because quite frankly, I would vote no on your motion, because I believe we are engaging in appropriate practices now. And to suggest otherwise is, I don't know why you do that. I don't know why you do that. I just don't. To suggest otherwise is just, it's not correct. It's factually incorrect.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Cardenas, our final speaker on the queue.
Thank you. It's amazing that we have two motions. One motion is titled "A Commitment to Transparency," which we've been debating for close to an hour or so now. And then, yet, we still have today a motion exercising Rule 54 to pull the stadium issue out of the committee process and to the floor, which I think is a contradiction to a commitment to transparency, because one of the things that we have to be reminded, members, is right now, people are rushing to speak and not speaking or what have you, because a member wants to leave, and therefore, we're rushing to a vote, where when we're in committee, when we're in committee, we actually get more than three minutes to dialogue with our advisors, to call somebody up to the table, to actually flush out the policy matters that are before us. That's why we even have committees, members. We have committees so that we can actually flush out. The Plum Committee, Councilmember Reyes, congratulations. Some people probably feel bad for you, but I'm sure you feel very proud of the fact that on some items, you actually deliberate on one item for as much as an hour, two or three hours, with much public comment, and also with professionals, city staff, attorneys, et cetera, trying to help us understand what it is that's before us, so that we can deliberate and then make an informed, good decision. The thing that some, maybe it's lost on some people here, but it's not lost on me. The reason why we have a democratic process, the reason why we have elected bodies of Congress, of state legislatures, of city councils like this, is because the public doesn't want to be sitting there ad nauseam, making the decisions. They entrust us to make the decisions. But at that same time, they entrust us to do it transparently. They entrust us to do it, hopefully, in a very intelligent way and in very informed manner, so we can make decisions that are final. And the fact of the matter is, this Rule 54, I think, is anti-transparent, at the same time that the same maker of that motion is saying that he wants more transparency. Again, the committee process allows us to deliberate for more than three minutes at a time. In committee, we flush things out in full view of the public. We are, in fact, having Brown Act notified ad hoc committees right now. The ad hoc committee will, in fact, continue to deliberate this. And also, if we were to pull, if we were to actually exercise this Rule 54, we won't have the meeting in the San Fernando Valley, so that the San Fernando Valley constituents can come more conveniently to watch that deliberation, to fill out a public comment card, comment on whether or not they like or don't like this idea of a stadium, et cetera. That won't happen. So the bottom line is, I just want to compliment us once again that we are very transparent here, and that I think this motion that says a commitment transparency is, in fact, less than transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Okay, that is the final speaker. Mr. Clerk, we have some motions and the item before us.
Yes, sir. We have, there have been multiple motions to refer this matter back to committee. We also have a motion from Councilmember Alarcon, which would amend the language to make it read in a much more positive light in favor of the city. So it would appear that the first motion before you would be to refer the matter back to committee.
Okay, on that matter, refer back to committee, colleagues. On referring back to the committee, yes or no? Yes or no? Open the roll.
Yes, 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 yes.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Wait, wait, wait. What are we voting on?
We're voting.
To refer back to Rules and Elections Committee.
Ms. Han?
I believe if Mr. Alarcon has a motion that changes the language to make it more positive, does it have the same, then it seems to me that's what we should be voting on, because...
There's different motions. We're going to vote on each of them. So we're going to vote on...
But it might change people's, does it change, it might change people's view if they knew it was positive.
If this gets referred back, if it doesn't get referred back, then we have Mr. Alarcon's motion. So let's clear the roll.
Because even if we refer it to a committee, we want it to be the positive version, right?
Let's clear the roll. Okay, we've cleared the roll. Mr. Kocorian?
Point of order, Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Whoa, whoa. Mr. Kocorian, you have the floor.
Thank you. Point of order. I think Mr. Alarcon made the last motion, and his motion should be voted on first, should it not?
Mr. Clerk, we do the last one first. Is that, I didn't follow the order, because I know there were a number of them came forward.
It appears that many of the motions were repetitive. However, Mr. Weezer made the last motion to refer it back to committee, and then it was Mr. LeBange to refer it back to committee, then Mr. Alarcon's motion to amend it.
Mr. Weezer, your comment. Mr. Weezer, you look puzzled. Mr. Weezer, you are puzzled.
No, for the record, I believe, my understanding is that Ms. Perry made a motion earlier in this debate and was seconded by Mr. LeBange.
Correct.
All I said in my speech was, if I'm going to vote today, given the information we have, I'll vote yes. But I do agree with sending it back to committee if that is the case. So I did not, I did not make the motion.
Okay.
Did not make the motion.
That would bring us back to Mr. LeBange, then, who spoke previous to Mr. Weezer.
So Mr. Weezer was making a comment. Okay, so, so Mr. Alarcon's motion, Mr. Clerk, is that correct? Mr. Alarcon's motion will come up first?
I do believe Mr. LeBange made the last motion to refer it back to committee, or the last motion.
Yeah.
He seconded Perry's. Mr. LeBange is secondary.
He did that, but then when he spoke for a second time, he also, he again recommended referring it back to committee.
But I don't know if anybody seconded it. Yeah.
Mr. LeBange, what was your motion?
Yeah, it was a written report. I gave a copy to a voc, a city attorney's opinion to add to that, if I recall it. So that's why I should go back to committee.
Okay, why don't we make it real simple? We have a motion to send it to committee. We have an amended motion by Mr. Alarcon on the language of Mr. Rosendahl's motion. I think that might be an easy...
Ms. Perry's.
There you go. That's what it is. It's one vote.
Exactly.
Okay, so let's vote on Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Alarcon's motion. Let's vote on that first.
It was amended first, so it's one vote.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, you clarify that for everyone. As Mr. Coretts rises to state something.
So would this one motion put the more positive language in and refer it back to committee?
Yes, it's one vote.
So the people that don't want to see it referred back to committee should not be voting for this motion?
You should vote no on it, then.
Correct.
So, Mr. Clerk, for clarification, for everyone, one more time, what we're going to vote on right now.
This vote would be to, excuse me, refer this matter back to the Rules and Elections Committee, as well as to amend the language to a much more positive point of view, or perspective, rather.
All right. Do we have any other motions after this one? Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the motion be amended, striking the language in the third paragraph that reads "The city attorney's interpretation is startling," and beginning the next sentence with the word "some," and then follow, at the end of that paragraph, including the following sentence. "It has been the practice of this council to adhere to the Brown Act in the operation of its ad hoc committees."
Mr. Rosendahl seconded that.
That's the positive one.
So that's the one that will take the floor now?
No, that is my motion.
That's a new motion.
It's the last motion made.
That's the new motion by Mr. Kocorian. For clarification, Ms. Perry, wait, wait, wait. Ms. Han needs to leave, and I know we're going to belabor this point. Can we, can we just?
No, let's go. Let's vote.
So, Mr. Kocorian's motion, Mr. Clerk, cite that for the colleagues, and then we'll vote.
It was after you called for the question to articulate that. So I would rule a little stronger for the chair.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange, for your comments. Your confusion only makes it more confusing. So, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
What are we voting on now?
Technically, sir, I don't believe anybody called for the question. Therefore, I believe Mr. Kocorian's mo...
Hold on. Mr. Alarcon has the button pushed. Mr. Alarcon, then Ms. Perry. Mr. Alarcon?
I defer to...
Ms. Perry.
Madam Perry.
You were engaged in the process of voting. You had already opened the roll once.
And then, and then we didn't stop it. So let's go back to where we are, since more discussion and more motions have surfaced. And what we want to do is clarify, vote, and then move this item one way or another. So, Mr. Clerk, to clear any confusion, what are we going to vote on right now? So, Mr. Clerk, to clear any confusion, what are we going to vote on right now?
You know, I believe Mr. Kocorian and Ms. Perry are both correct in their assertions.
All right. So why don't we vote on Ms. Perry's motion, and then we'll determine what happens with that, and then we'll vote on Mr. Kocorian's motion?
The rulebook it states, once you completed have a vote, then that's, the issue was closed.
We don't have a vote, Mr. LeBonge.
We did have a vote, we did, we opened the roll.
We did not take the vote. We did not close the roll, we did not take that vote. So it's still pending, Mr. LeBonge. Mr. City Attorney, can you clarify so we can move this?
Just for the record, it is the call of the chair subject to overrule by the body. So it's your call, Mr. President.
All right, so my call is, so let's vote. We're going to vote for Ms. Perry's motion, as amended by Mr. Alarcon, which means that we're modifying the language and sending it back to committee. All right, colleagues? And Ms. Kocorian, I guess your motion came in too late, according to the rules. So open the roll.
Ruling of the chair.
All right. It's discretionary. At any rate, colleagues, we're going to vote. Okay, so let's take that vote. Mr. Clerk, so this vote will be...
Mr. Clerk, this vote would be to override your ruling, or interpretation, rather, to take the Perry motion.
Okay, so Ms. Kocorian calls for a yes vote on overruling the chair. So let's open the roll. Let's close the roll, let's tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, eight noes.
All right. So we move forward with the vote on Ms. Perry's motion. On that, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
The matter passes. So the language modified and sent to committee. That matter is done.
So that will be sent to committee as amended.
Thank you. Next item, please.
That brings us to Item 26, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sacks, John Walsh, Number 26. Arnold Sacks, John Walsh, Number 26.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. I think you're doing this because you're homophobic. No, really. Adopting budgetary measures, what pot of money will be disturbed to adopt these new budgetary measures? You know, Councilman Parks must be at the graduation for the School of Economics, otherwise he'd be able to answer this. But, again, it's always a question of, if you take money from one pot, you're going to be shorting another pot. So which pot of funds is going to be disturbed here, and these actions taken will maintain what positions for what agencies? Thank you.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, emailing at HollywoodDems@gmail.com, Facebooking at Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I. This is Item Number 28, Adopt A Accompanying Resolution, where 100 percent in favor of this, and you've been acting like children for the last 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That matters before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to Item 28, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, Number 28. He waves that through. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. On Number 28, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Any announcements? Mr. Cardenas?
I just want to thank my colleagues and all the staff who made sure that we had the cameras on, the recordings on, et cetera, so that people could see the transparency of the city council of Los Angeles today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? No announcements? Seeing no other announcements? Any adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions? Seeing no adjourning motions? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. That's what includes this meeting of the L.A. City Council. We will return on Friday. Have a good afternoon, Los Angeles.